Please join with me in a salute to our flag and remain standing for our prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Laura, thank you for tonight. Laura, thank you for elected officials and government leaders that you've put in place for such a time as this. We're asked for godly wisdom that it supersedes man's understanding of what this season of life is like with 2021, already getting a little bit crazy for us. And we're asked that you just guide the steps of this leadership team, Laura, that they make the accurate decisions for Guthrie. And Laura, they're able to see objectively through all of the emotions and all the different things that are going on and all the rumors, but Laura, that they're able to see truth and make accurate, sound decisions. And I thank you for that. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Okay, let me call to order our city council. I'm sorry, Public Works, Public Works meeting. Item number two is public comments, community announcements, recognitions. We have individuals that have signed up to make good comments to specific items, I believe. Not clear. Robin? Robin, are you making a comment on something that's on the agenda?
I was talking.
Or a general comment?
I was asking to get on new.
General comment?
No, I was asking to get on the agenda for new business for the next time to ask why we're paying two water bills and have two different cutoffs. Please explain the confusion.
Would you, would you come to the mic, identify yourself, and then restate?
I'm Robin Good Iron. I live at 212 Ranch Road in Guthrie. I was advised by Kim to be here to represent the sign to get on new business for a new agenda for the next meeting. So I could please ask why I'm paying two water bills, why I have two cutoff fees, why I've been cut off three times during COVID. My father is a veteran, double amputee above the knee, Native American. We live over the bridge, over 19th Street. Two different fees, they pointed each other. I was here on Friday, cut off on Monday, I was told it's the other water department. I've got this three times, but a mysterious $140 credit came up, three times. This has happened as a citizen, as a community. I want to know why and what's going on and where's the confusion. Can we combine and figure it out? I've got proof and documentation. Can I please get this on the floor?
You have talked.
To Kim?
To Kim?
Multiple times.
Wouldn't this have been brought to the Finance Committee out of curiosity?
We haven't, no.
No?
No. She hasn't asked for an adjustment or anything.
Okay.
Okay.
I have asked multiple times for help, how to resolve this, how to prevent it again during a COVID outbreak, when my father is a veteran and full-blood Native American, and why do we keep having this problem? I'm following the exact advice I was given and done everything that I was asked to do by her right here tonight. So I don't know what the next process is.
Can I meet with you after we get through with our council meeting?
Yes.
And jot all those down?
Yes.
Ms. Good Iron?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, I guess that was all, you had all three of them listed here. Okay. Let me get with you afterwards, if you would, so I can get them all listed down with specific, with more specifics if you don't need, if you have that time. Okay, very good. Item number three is consent agenda items A and B. A is the approval of the Special Public Works Authority Meeting of December 21st. And B is the approval of engagement letter of HBC CPAs to provide auditing service.
So moved.
Have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval from all those present then to approve the consent agenda items A and B. Item number four, discussion, possible action to award bid number 2020-12 wastewater treatment improvements. Leroy, you taking that?
There's no change from the presentation that we did back in December on the projects. We couldn't award it that time because we had not closed on our bond. Now that we closed on our bond issue, we have funds on hand. But we didn't want to actually issue a contract without having the money in the bank. For some reason, they don't like you to do that. But the first item you're doing is awarding the base project, the plan itself, to HCCO out of Tulsa for $15,200,000. And the base bid was 15,500,000. We took the three alternate deducts off. We're going to do those ourselves in-house with our crews. And then you will see in item number five, we're doing a change order that will further reduce that 15,200,000 down to 14,173,000. So you're awarding the contract, taking the three deducts, and you're doing one change order. On the section B, you're awarding the contract minus alternate deduct B1. The alternate, we're going to do ourselves. And in section three is the section C, off-site piping. There is no change to that, $1,995,040. So these are all the way that we liked about back in December when we went through the detailed presentation. And they all add up to the same amount that we presented back in December. We just couldn't award them because we had not closed on the bond issue.
And we got two rounds of funding at 8 million each, right?
8 million each, and then we will, if you want to use the term bridge loan, we've committed some of our reserve monies in the form of bridge loan. And in 2022, we'll go back and borrow the rest of it because we set our own cap. So we'll borrow the remaining balance in 2022.
And it'd be noted on the email you sent, we got a lower interest rate on the second, 8 million.
Correct.
Amazing. Okay.
Motion to approve?
Any questions?
Second.
A motion. And a second then to approve bid number 2020-12. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval to approve bid number 2020-12. Item number five, discussion, possible action to approve change order number one to the wastewater treatment plant. Leroy, you covering that also?
That's same as we discussed back in December. When we opened bids and looked at price, we went back and did some value engineering, downsized some things. Some things it would be nice to have, we could live without, we did out. So this is the result of some value engineering to reduce our cost once we saw what the bids were.
Okay, I'm going to take a motion. Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval then to approve and move forward with change order number one. Item number six is discussion, possible action to amendment number two. The engineering contract with where is engineering?
This is adding the professional services for managing three separate contracts that was not in the contract yet because we weren't to that point. And we, because he's doing three separate contracts, and I'm trying to find my notes here. The amount did go up slightly from what was originally budgeted several months ago. But we reduced the amount of testing, so as a wash. The total cost is the same, but we did bump up slightly the amount. I think it was 140 to start with, and we bumped it up.
161.
161.
But the total, total amount of the overall contract?
Total project stayed the same.
Stayed the same. It just moved up from one, one pocket to another.
Correct.
Okay, any questions of Leroy? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
And a second, have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval to go forward and approve amendment number two. With that being the last item on our agenda, I'm adjourning our special public, I mean, our Public Works Authority Meeting. And called to order our city council meeting. Consent agenda, that's the second item on our agenda, is consent agenda's item A and B. A is the approval of Special City Council Meeting of December 21st. B is the confirmation of Public Works Authority approving the audit engagement letter with HBC CPAs.
So moved.
Entertain a motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Raise your right hand for approval. Unanimous approval then for approving consent agenda items A and B. Item number three, discussion, possible action to approve the 2021 Emergency Management Services Mutual Aid Agreement between the City of Guthrie and Logan County.
On that one, last year, we paid 13,000. Under this agreement, we will pay.
15,500.
15,500. And the way we came up with that, we agreed to the county. When you look at the county population, you subtract off the population that already has their own emergency management, like Crescent and others. And then you compare the rural population to inside the city, we make up about 27%. We rounded it to 30, and that's how we come up with the 15,500. In this contract, the first quarter, we will not pay them because we have some old radios and stuff that are used that by 2025, we're going to have to get new ones anyway. We're letting them have those instead of having to go back and forth. So this new contract, instead of being 13,000, is 15,500. We will continue to explore if it makes sense for us to bring this in-house and do it ourselves versus contracting with the county for future years. But right now, our recommendation is to approve this for this year.
Okay, any questions of Leroy? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval then for the fiscal year 2021 Emergency Management Services Mutual Agreement, Aid Agreement between the City of Guthrie and Logan County. Item number four, discussion, possible action to approve the purchase of one triple combination fire pumper apparatus. Leroy, chief?
I will let Eric start it, and then I may have some comments when it's done.
Chief?
Thank you, counsel. As you see on the agenda, we are proposing the purchase of one triple combination fire pumper, commonly known as a fire engine, probably one of the more common used pieces of equipment in our department. We currently operate three engines, ranging in years 1991, 1997, and 2001. And our staff has researched options, looked at different specifications, and drawn up a plan that you have before you tonight. Conrad Fire Equipment, which represents Pierce Manufacturing, a brand that we've used for decades around here, has proposed a purchase price of 270, or I'm sorry, $671,627.94 and included a prepaid discount of $21,627.94, which leaves us with a final purchase price of $650,000 even. Funding for this would come from a combination of 422,500 of our CARES Act money that we received at the end of last fiscal year, which some of us had previously discussed. I believe at the council retreat, using part of that for this purchase. The remaining, which that represents, excuse me, 65% of the cost of the truck. The other 35% will come from a USDA Rural Development Community Facilities Grant. This is the same grant that the library received a few years ago and we received last year for the two ambulance purchases that we made. We should have official notification of that grant within the next few weeks. We've been notified that we will get it. They're waiting on their next allocation of funding to make the official award. So we will bring that back to you guys once it's officially awarded. But that is our financial plan for this purchase.
And great job on that.
Any money we can save that we're not taking out of our coffers is being ahead.
35% of the total cost?
And we got, we got lucky, just to clarify, on the community facilities programs with USDA, the only reason they're doing, they usually have a $50,000 cap or 35%, whichever is less. Due to the pandemic going on, that $50,000 cap has been raised. When we got it for the ambulances, we were in the middle of a disaster declaration, which took the cap off as well. So we've gotten lucky twice in a row just by the unfortunate circumstances that are going on.
So do we want to try to approve this pending the approval of USDA funds, or?
USDA give us the green light to go ahead and place the order. And then they will send us the paperwork on the actual grant next month. But verbally, they've approved it. They just can't until they get their next round of funding to issue it.
Well, we've already agreed to do this out of the COVID money anyway.
Yeah.
So I make a motion to approve.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
So we've got three pumpers, is that right?
And we will surplus and get rid of one of those.
That was going to be my question. So what do we do?
Most likely, the truck we're looking at getting rid of right now is by year model is actually the newest one. But looking at the mechanical history and the repairs on it, it's probably in the worst shape. And we'll continue to kind of analyze that over the build time of this new one to make sure. Typically, when we get rid of something like that, we surplus it and give it to one of the volunteer departments around us that may still have a need for it. We'll consider that option when it comes time, or we may come back to you guys with the possible option of selling it or trading it into a used truck broker.
So if we surplus it, there's really not a financial, significant financial?
There could be a little bit of trade-in value, but depending on what truck we get of, either the oldest one, which is 30 years old now, there's not a lot of market for it. You're talking pennies compared to the new one. The one we're actually looking at getting rid of, the 2001, still has a little bit of value. The problem is, when we get our oil changes done on that, they do an oil analysis on it, and we're starting to show traces of metal in the oil. So that truck is probably going to need a motor overhaul or a new motor within the next year or two anyway. So you've got a huge cost allocation there that you'd have to do. So we'll kind of look at those things over the next year while this truck's being built and come back with you guys when we have a recommendation.
Okay, and it's going to take approximately a year?
It's a 10 to 12-month build time, yes. It's usually about an eight to 10-month. With COVID going on, they've got a lot of vendor supply issues of parts that Pierce uses. And so things are pushed back a couple of months, which we've seen in everything from EMS supplies to bunker gear and everything else. It's caused a lot of supply chain issues.
Okay, all right. Any other questions by the council?
I have some comments. Just for clarification for the general public, COVID Relief Act, there's a lot of pockets of money. There's pockets of money for payroll reimbursement for private businesses. There are pockets of money for business stimulus money. This pocket of money this came out of was to reimburse municipalities for their expenses tied to COVID. And the state, when they got their money, determined that we could turn in our payroll expenses for police and fire, public service. We did that, and that's why we're using this for equipment, is because it's money geared towards reimbursing the city for their expenses, not for other purposes that you hear about. Secondly, because it is a reimbursement, it's already considered spent by the federal government. So we're done with all their regulations. We can use it any way we want for our equipment. We got $898,832 reimbursement at the end of last fiscal year. With this expenditure, because we were able to get the USDA grant, we'll have roughly $475,000 of COVID money left in our funds. I'd like to hold back $100,000 of that in case we have COVID-related expenses this budget year. But then that would leave 376, and I'd like for the city council, I think the use of the other funds, a good purpose would be to do something for our seniors and look at renovations at Highland Hall to bring it up to code. The restrooms are atrocious out there. I would like to work with an architect and come back with a proposal to spend money to improve Highland Hall to serve the seniors with their meal program. And of course, we rent it out to the general public as well.
Which would probably include kitchen and all of that.
Correct, to some degree. And then whatever's left, put towards, probably put towards street improvements, if there's some.
So let's get that on the next agenda, and we can approve that, right?
Well, we'll need some numbers, so we're working on that.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second then to move forward with the procurement of the pumper.
I don't have a second.
Yeah.
You got them both now?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, everybody in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval then to move forward with the procurement of a new pumper. And here.
Thank you, chief.
And of course, that predicated upon getting the grant, the grant being finalized.
Thank you, guys.
Okay?
Thank you.
Good, thanks, chief.
Predicated on the grant.
No, we want to go ahead and issue the order because of the lifetime of receiving it, so that we get quicker since we've been guaranteed we will get the grant.
Okay, moving forward with the procurement, full procurement.
Yep.
All right. Item number five, discussion, possible action to approve ordinance number 3344, amending our traffic article concerning wrecker and towing services code. Don is leaving because obviously that impacts his business. Chief?
Thank you. Ever since I've been here as chief, we've had some issues going back and forth with wrecker services, trying to determine what rules we should follow, what we shouldn't follow. We've not had anything in writing. I think that since Leroy came on board and with the help of Councilman Channel and his knowledge of the services and the other services that we've run this by, I think this is a good first step in making, making the lives easier between the police department of the city and wrecker services. Probably the biggest change is we've opted to grandfather in wreckers that have tow yards outside the city limits. But from this point forward, we're going to restrict them to the city limits. It is, it is heck for the officers to call a wrecker and wait sometimes an hour for them to come in. We had, we have two that are outside the city now, and they're, they're not the most active ones, but they're still, they will remain on the rotation.
So my understanding? Go ahead.
I was just asking where they were at. I have to choose their rotation.
They're, yeah, they're closer up to the Edmund line. I mean, if they, if they left their facility the second, we called, it'd take them 25 minutes to get here. And they, I mean, typically, that's not how it happens.
So my understanding is if you got pulled over and your vehicle got towed as it stands now before this, they could tow your car wherever, right? Is that right?
The company has to tow it to their impound yard.
But that could be Edmund.
Yes, it could be, it could be.
And now we're talking about making it Guthrie City proper.
Yes, we'll, we'll keep the two that remain outside the city limits, but from this point forward, we will not allow that to happen. They're going to have to have their main yard inside the city limits.
Right. Why do we want to keep the two?
I, I think it's, it's bad practice to kick people off that have already been approved.
Well, plus you got highway issue going on, right?
Then we require them to bring their cars here?
That's not where their primary law is. It's traditional to grandfather them in when you change rules. We did the same thing when I was in Catoosa several years ago, and we grandfathered to this one. Now, if they ever relocate, they can't, they can't locate a second place outside the city limits. If they ever move, they have to move to the city. But as long as they stay where they're at, they would be grandfathered.
And how many, how many businesses are we talking about? Two? No, total. How many are in the rotation?
I believe we have six or seven.
That are in Guthrie? But that includes the two in Edmund.
Yes.
So four?
Yes, and we just recently lost one of them. They were, he retired the company, yes.
So we got three in Guthrie or four?
Three or four.
No other duplicates, are there?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I second it.
Have a motion and a second?
Thanks, chief.
Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval for all those present then to move forward with the approval of that ordinance 3344. Item number six. Wait for Don to get back in.
It's coming this way, Leroy. That was like who's on third.
And then we'll wait for Leroy to be seated. Okay, item number six, discussion, possible action concerning the ice storm debris, curbside pickup, collection sites, disposal. Tenny, are you taking that one?
Tenny. I believe they might have a slide for you guys to look at. I don't believe that's in your packet. Provided a map to kind of give the idea of what we've covered in the city limits. Right now, I feel we're roughly pretty well close to 50%. That's, we still have everything out south, but as in the dense part of the town, you can see everything in pink. We have covered through our first pass. A few numbers to go over with you guys. The city has removed 4,260 cubic yards roughly of city, off of city facilities. We've removed 12,917 cubic yards over a 13-day period that we have removed brush off of curbside. Again, that was just doing it for 13 days. We've had some other things that's set precedents over it, whether it's water main breaks or the snow storms or different things that we've, we've taken care of. There was nine, there's been 9,793 cubic yards hauled by residents to our convenience center from that service as well. So a total of 26,971 cubic yards of brush has been handled to this point. And that's not counting any contract numbers in that, in those numbers. We've had several contractors. I don't have those numbers or the availability of those numbers. What contractors has hauled out of our cities?
Or privates that moved their own stuff and all that.
So with that, we have received, as of today, a call from FEMA. We've got a conference call set up with them at 2 o'clock tomorrow to start the process with FEMA. So we're starting to see a little bit of headway there. They'll advise us on the future steps to take. So with that, I feel like that we're making pretty good headway. We've gotten back started today again. So we'll start running every day from this point on again until other things set precedence, whether it's meter reads or whatever it might be.
And if you look at the fact that we're somewhere around the 50% mark of being completed, if you look on news media, newspapers in other communities, we're pretty similar to other surrounding communities as far as being at that 50% mark at this point.
Well, great, great job on that, Tenny. Really, really appreciate that. I don't know, anybody have any questions of Tenny, any council? Okay, item number seven, city manager report.
I have no additional reports tonight.
Item number eight, comments by city council members. Vice Mayor Case?
Everybody be safe. We've been through a heck of a lot in the last few months, and we've got more ahead of us, so just stay safe.
Councilman Channel?
I got nothing.
Councilman Bathroyd?
You know, I typically, I don't probably praise staff enough, but this time around, I'd like to give them a, give them a big round from both chiefs on what they're doing with the fire truck, with the towing code. Don, thanks for your help on that. Leroy, Dan, no good deed goes unpunished on the zoning stuff. And you guys, you know, deserve a big, big round. That's it for me.
Councilman Pageant?
Well, it looks like it's all been said. We do have a couple of members of the airport board with us this evening. May I introduce them?
Sure.
We have Stan Young and Brad Latham.
Welcome, welcome, gentlemen. Councilman Long?
Yeah, I just wanted to recognize Max Fairchild for all the improvements he's doing, especially there on South Division. I've gotten lots of calls, I'm sure you guys have too, on what's going on. I, I've gotten lots of calls, I'm sure you guys have too, on what's going on down there, uh, all the tree removal and cleanup, and it's really cleaning up the entry to our city. So I appreciate all the investment that he's, uh, making in our community. And I don't know if you guys have heard the commercials that he's, uh, has on the radio as well. So it's kind of nice to hear him, uh, you know, bringing people to Guthrie. So I just want to recognize him for that.
Councilman Taylor?
Nothing to say, just thank you, Stan.
I've got a couple of things. One is kind of, uh, a little bit redundant because, uh, many of you have seen, uh, the published, uh, award winners from the Chamber of Commerce banquet. And, uh, Chamber of Commerce, uh, this week recognized a number of, of individuals. I'd just like to reemphasize that. Citizen of the Year was Crystal Flurry. Business of the Year was Prairie Wolf. Small Business was the, uh, the Haunts, Guthrie Haunts. Nonprofit was Hope House. The Volunteer of the Year Award went to Tammy Boxley. And the Lifetime Achievement Award went to Sylvia Oaks. Recognition well deserved by all of those individuals. And, uh, congratulations to the chamber for hosting, uh, hosting that evening and making those, those recognitions. The other thing I'd like to mention is we do have, uh, some opportunities for citizens to be, uh, more engaged in our, in our, uh, in our activities here, our governmental activities, by being on some of the boards or commissions. Uh, we have some vacancies coming up in the next few months in the Board of Adjustments, in Historic Preservation Commission, and also on the Planning Commission. We have, I think, two vacancies in each one of those, uh, three commissions. And then on the Forestry Board and the Park Board, uh, we have, uh, one vacancy in each one of those. If you're interested, uh, go into the, the City of Guthrie website. It identifies a little bit more about how frequently those, uh, those commissions or boards meet, what their responsibilities are. Clearly, uh, it is a wonderful, uh, thing to get in, uh, more involved with our community. Give us your inputs, your insights, uh, and assist us as we, uh, as we make continuous improvements in the City of Guthrie for all the citizens. With that, our city council is adjourned. Thank you. Okay, calling to order our special city, uh, Special Economic Development Authority meeting. And consent agenda item A is the approval of the special Guthrie Economic Development Authority Meeting of December twenty-first. Entertain a motion?
Still moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. Is there any, any, uh, discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval then of the consent agenda item A. Item number three, consider approval to convene into executive session for purposes of, uh, conferring on matters pertaining to economic development with specifics to the Guthrie Edmund Regional Airport.
Still moved.
Have one emotion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval then to move into executive session. We will see the rest of you in a few minutes. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, reconvene, come out of executive session.
Still moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval to come out of executive session. Item number five, considering action regarding, uh, the Edmund, or the Guthrie Edmund Regional Airport. No action taken at this time.
Nothing.
With that being the last item on the agenda, we're adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.